On the March 5th, DeSoto City Council meeting to order, start with roll call, please.
Here.
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 Okay, I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A little out of sync here at the start of the meeting. Our first item tonight is a public hearing to consider proposed tax issuance, no, to consider proposed issuance by the city of $7 million in industrial revenue bonds and a 10-year, 50% tax abatement for a proposed 56-unit apartment project at 34000 West 91st Terrace. So with that, I will, do we want, what do we want first?
Yeah.
Presentation by...
I think Kevin Wimpy, Bond Counsel's here, thought we'd have him say a few words about what's before you. Then Matt, I don't know if you want to, if you want to address after Kevin, and then I think we'll save Jeff for the...
Public hearing piece? Okay, all right.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond counsel. I'll give you a quick update on the process and state law aspects. So as you know, this is the second phase of the apartments from the applicant for the K-10 place and is requesting industrial revenue bonds, which really aren't a real financing vehicle, they're just a vehicle for obtaining the two incentives that are attendant with IRBs. And it's sales tax exemption on construction materials and property tax abatement for a maximum period of 10 years. And the applicant's requested 50% abatement on this phase. So you're aware, it's a two-step process to issue industrial revenue bonds. The first step involves a public hearing, preparation of a cost-benefit analysis, published notice in the paper of this hearing, and adoption of a resolution of intent, which is before you tonight. And the effect of adopting the resolution would allow the developer to access the sales tax exemption certificate from the state and go forth building the project using that certificate, with the expectation that at the completion of the project, the city would consider an ordinance to actually issue the bonds and trigger the abatement the calendar year following that, again, for a maximum period of 10 years. The bonds are outstanding for the whole period of that abatement, but there is no obligation of the city to repay them. The developer would buy its own bond here, so there's no pledge of the city's credit or general fund involved. Those are the highlights. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Matt, did you want to address the council before the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Walker, council members. I'm Matt Goff with Barbara Emerson Law Firm, here today on behalf of K-10 Place 2. You have the visual aid here, I hope you have had a chance to see it. If not, we can make it more visible to you now. But the K-10 Place Phase 2 apartments are 56 units in seven buildings. It's located immediately south of Phase 1. The estimated cost of construction is $7 million. And in exploring the feasibility of these Phase 2 apartments, the cost estimates came in approximately 20% higher for Phase 2 than they did for Phase 1. As a result, the applicant's requesting a 10-year, 50% tax abatement and a sales tax exemption on construction materials. Columbia Capital prepared a cost-benefit or benefit analysis and determined that the city, the county, and the school district would each benefit from the project. And it's worth noting there that the benefit is even greater when you factor in the spin-off effects of having more residents in DeSoto who would support local businesses and spend more here. For example, we anticipate that these units would further help and support the grocery store and other local businesses. I would note that you received letters in support of the project from several local businesses and from the DeSoto Economic Development Council. I'm pleased to stand for any questions you might have about the project.
Any questions for Mr. Goff?
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, then, I will officially open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to address the council during the public hearing regarding this matter? Certainly, step up.
Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Dustin Baker, who is the Chair of the DeSoto Economic Development Advisory Committee, and I wanted to relay his support as well as the Economic Development Advisory Council support for this project. Back in 2014, the city and the Economic Development Council commissioned a multifamily housing study, which identified the need for multifamily housing within the city of DeSoto. It had indicated at that time that the absorption rate would be roughly 15 to 19 months, and it's our understanding that with the Phase 1 of K-10 apartments, that indeed, that absorption rate was met. We have had our community housing assessment team that came back late last year and identified there still was a need for diverse housing, including multifamily housing. We wanted to also let you know that from the Business Retention and Expansion Program that the EDC conducted last year, we met with our major employers in the community, and virtually all of the businesses had identified that they do have employees that are living at K-10 apartments, one of them being the school district. And so we feel that these apartments provide a market-rate multifamily housing aspect for teachers who are coming to this area. So that also brings some of the employees to the community as well. And as Matt had identified too, the economic impact for the grocery store of having residents close by and the additional multifamily housing has been extremely beneficial. So with that, I just wanted to reiterate the support from the EDC on behalf of this project.
Okay. Thank you. So now, do we have Jeff during the public hearing as well?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital. We serve as the city's financial advisor. The city engaged us to perform the cost-benefit abatement, the cost-benefit analysis for the property tax abatement that Kevin mentioned is required by statute. You'll find that in your packet. And as Matt foreshadowed, kind of stole my thunder tonight, thanks, Matt, we did find that the city, the county, and the school district, which are the required entities that we assess as part of this process, we expect to see positive net benefit over the 10-year term of the abatement. And that's really primarily due to the fact that this is a 50% abatement. So from day one, tax dollars will be flowing through to all taxing entities, including city, county, and school district. At some point, I'll stop reminding you about this, but back in 2017, the legislature changed the tax abatement statute, and with respect to school districts, also excluded from abatement the capital mill levy, which is up to an eight-mill levy, or an eight-mill levy for schools, so that those taxes pass through regardless of the abatement. And that's why the school district's benefit is disproportionately high compared to the other entities. As Matt also noted, our analysis looks at direct costs and benefits only. It doesn't assess spin-off, so the concept that both Sarah and Matt talked about, that folks are going to move here, they're going to shop in the grocery, if more people shop in the grocery, the grocery has to hire more people, so on and so forth, is not factored in. So you might consider that additional benefit to the community as well. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. White? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Last call for public comment during the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on. So we'll address this as our first items in our new business. Okay. Our next item tonight is our consent agenda. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of February 20th, approval of pay ordinance 873, and approval of a farm lease with Thang Palmberg. Any discussion of any items on the consent agenda or a motion?
I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? If not, roll call, please. Yes.
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 Our next item is called a public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business that is not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight under call to public? Seeing none, we will move on to number three, old business, which we have none. So number four, new business, a considered resolution of intent for issuance by the city of $7 million in industrial revenue bonds and a 10-year, 50% tax abatement for proposed 56-unit apartment project at 34000 West 91st Terrace. So the item now is the resolution that we were, just held the hearing on.
That's correct, yep.
By approving that resolution, you're also offering the mayor to sign the pilot agreement, which is what sets the level of abatement at the 50%, and also addresses some of the other design aspects of the project.
So any questions or discussion regarding the resolution or this abatement request from the council?
I would just have one thing to point out on the pilot agreement relating to the site standards. Typically, in our planning application, a site plan, after a rezoning, a site plan for a development like this goes to the planning commission only, wouldn't typically come to the council for approval. But the pilot agreement requires that document to come here to the council for approval as well. So you'll see the site plan of the next phase of the apartments. You'll see that here and be able to look at the details of the architecture, the landscape, the buffering, all those physical site elements. You'll see those and you'll be able to approve those under the pilot agreement, so that'll be a little different than the typical process.
Any questions for staff regarding this? Does someone want to make a motion?
What's the resolution number? I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 1027, determining the intent of the city of DeSoto to issue the industrial revenue bonds in the aggregate amount not to exceed $7 million to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a commercial project for the benefit of K-10 Place 2 LLC or its successors and assigns.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Our next item is to discuss codes enforcement policy for downtown.
Yes, council, this is, codes enforcement policy is something we've talked about here over the last several years on a number of occasions. It's one of those balancing acts, you know, in terms of how much codes enforcement you do versus how much you don't do, wide range array of opinions in a community like ours. And we try and strike a balance between too much and not enough. So in 2015, to kind of memorialize the policy, we did set out a policy that specifically explains our intent related to codes enforcement. Prior to that, we'd had a period of more than a decade of only reactive codes enforcement. We wouldn't enforce anything unless somebody complained about it. In 2015, we set a policy where we were a bit more aggressive than that. We looked at, kind of established a list of five properties throughout the city to proactively enforce. We also decided we're going to proactively enforce weeds violation and abandoned vehicles. We modified that policy in 2017 to take, I think, another baby step forward, expand the number of properties there, and just to expand those enforcement efforts. You know, and I think over the five years since the initial policy was written, really has helped us, as far as staff, gain some direction on what to enforce, what not to enforce. It's all a very thick gray line, a judgment area on almost all of these, so that's, the policies really helped a lot. Recently, we've had a lot of discussions about downtown. There have been several businesses that have opened up downtown, and kind of a renewed emphasis on encouraging economic development there, and, you know, putting our best foot forward essentially for the downtown area. So, and Linda Lane, who's been on the planning commission, she's also emphasized an importance for that particular area in terms of code enforcement. So the mayor and I and Linda sat down at the beginning of February and decided that we could revise the policy to take just another, I would call this another half-step forward in terms of codes, in terms of our policy, what we enforce, what we don't enforce. So basically, what you have in front of you is a resolution that would update that enforcement policy, essentially just to kind of focus on the downtown area, so it's a, the C1 zoning district would just be that two-block section of downtown. What the policy now says is that we're going to go ahead and proactively enforce code enforcement violations in these four areas. One's health nuisances, the other is environmental code violations, motor vehicle nuisances, and obviously use limitations. On the environmental code, we have some definition. Essentially, this is the property maintenance code, and it calls for enforcing, you know, dilapidation of the exteriors. And, you know, dilapidation is a word that's very subjective, so I tried to get some language in there that puts a little bit of definition to exactly what that means. And the language is there on the staff report in red. "For the purposes that policy deteriorated, dilapidated, or unsightly exterior conditions shall mean plainly visible from the public street and exist over more than a quarter of the exterior structure, and are likely to contribute to the continued deterioration of the structure." Just to try and put some parameters to it, just to help, really to kind of help staff, you know, make that determination. So I think, again, this continues to strike that balance within the community. You know, kind of explain, every issue you have, there's this bell curve of opinions around it, and some people are on one end of the curve and they don't want any codes enforced, and some people might be on the other end of the curve and want to throw the book at everybody. I think we're still, this kind of still sets us squarely in the middle of where the community is comfortable, and it really kind of comes down to a community sort of discussion, decision on this. Every community is different. Leewood's going to be different than us, and we're going to be different than Tonkinoxi. So with that, if you want to enact these changes, there is a resolution that Patrick's prepared in the staff report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mike? Comments?
Yeah, I got a question, Mike. Maybe I should have known how this is administered, but with regard to the list of 10 properties, is that a rolling list, or is that periodically...
It's up to 10.
Up to 10?
But yeah, it is a rolling list.
So presumably, you get some codes issues off, and then you're looking around to kind of have the 10 that you're focusing on at any given point in time.
Yeah, and practically, really, we're not hung up on 10. It really is, the initial focus of that was, we want to focus on those properties where any sane person driving down the street would look at that property and wouldn't blame anybody for enforcing codes, you know?
Yeah.
And so it was ones that are the worst and also most highly visible and impactful to the community, you know, ones on the main thoroughfare, something like that. So we're not really hung up on 10, but we want to make sure that the properties that are, that are obvious, the ones that are obvious, that reasonable people will drive by and say, something needs to be done there, that those are on that list. That's the intent.
Comments, questions? Or a motion?
Would be Resolution Number 1028.
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution 1028, adopting the new 2017 codes enforcement policy with the... Yeah, I was just reading what it said there, 2020. Sorry, I read the wrong one. The 2020 enforcement policy.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried.
Okay. Item C, consider design services with Indigo Design for Riverfest Band Shell.
Yes, council, after our discussion in February about the band shell project, I reached out to Doug Pickert to have him give us a scope and fee to help us through the concept design on that, for that structure. He gave that to me informally, kind of as an email that you have there, is attached to your staff report. The scopes outlined there, he'll develop preliminary concepts for three different concepts, attend some council meetings, attend some staff meetings, and update cost estimates for all those. So he's estimated his time in that for a total of $7,900 maximum. So what I'd like, we don't, I don't have the formal contract, but we'll need one, so I'm asking for your approval to accept Doug's price proposal and enter the contract with him after review from the city attorney.
Questions for Mike? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the administrator to go into contract for $7,000, not to exceed $7,900 at this time.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried.
Okay. Item D, consider bid for City Hall asbestos abatement project.
Yes, council, in this year's capital improvement plan, we have $120,000 for City Hall improvements, and those include some safety upgrades for the main level, but also the abatement of what's left of the asbestos in the building. And this will, this will take care of the asbestos problem, all of it that's remaining in the building. The map that you have, the floor plan, I've shown up here. Most of this is floor tile in the upper level, straight above, straight above us here. So really, all those rooms up there have asbestos tile in them. This project would remove that tile. Also, down in the east wing, where the water department is, if you go out, the east doors down here, water department has an office there, and then there's a floor landing, which it's the landing between, down by that, by where the mayor's office is. So this will get all that asbestos removed from the building, so that in the future, we want to do upgrades, we can do them. Good bids, you know, we had seven bids on this. The lowest bid was submitted by Major Abatement, an amount of $12,380. So we're asking for your approval to accept the low bid in an amount of $12,380.
Okay, questions on this item from anyone? Mike, they did some testing in these areas, and were some of that data come back, or did I? Did you do testing in these areas?
Glad Jay's here. Yeah. Steve had company come out, that'd been 18, I think 2018, he'd be better to answer that, and we walked the building, and they did some testing when they came out, so identified all the areas. It's tile, and also some of the steam lines have asbestos wrap around them as well, so that'll be removed at the same time.
Okay. Does their scope talk about what type of cleanup they're going to have, like type one with negative air pressure or any...
What it said in the contract, Steve doesn't have that in here, does he? He laid it out as, I don't know how to describe it, I wish he was here to answer these questions, but following all regulations that are, that are needed. So like I said, that would be a more technical Steve question, I think, so.
That's all I had.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the bid from Major Appointment for $12,380, is that correct?
Yeah, Major Abatement, $12,380.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried.
Okay. Item D, consider, no, E, consider bid for epoxy flooring.
Jay, why don't you take this? All right. Kind of in conjunction with the asbestos removal, we've identified two areas that we need to put flooring back in. Obviously, we're not going to, we're just going to leave the concrete and the wood upstairs. There's some closets, we'll just leave the concrete. But two areas we've identified that need new flooring would be the landing that was mentioned earlier, between City Hall and headed down to the water department and the shop and the mayor's office. The other location is the water department's office itself. So determination was made, really don't have a choice aesthetically, at the bottom of these steps out here on this landing, we're going to match the existing epoxy that is on either stairwell going up or down from there, and then decided to go with an epoxy floor in the water department's office as well, just due to thinking that carpet would definitely not be the route to go. When you think water department, carpet, that doesn't really go together, coming in with muddy boots and everything. So we wanted something that was durable, and hopefully to last for a while, so kind of killing two birds with one stone with both the projects being the same material.
And again, this will come from that CIP project for the City Hall this year.
Same line item, yeah.
Okay. Questions for Jay?
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid proposal with epoxy floors by Seal KC in an amount of $5,553.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I just make one comment? I noticed that the previous person that installed the other epoxy floor didn't bid.
Correct.
Have we had trouble with that floor?
With, we've had some chipping on, well, they've done, they did two rounds. They did the basement first, and then the white and gray stairwell portions, and then did this, this was the second round out here. We did have some chipping on the steps, on the white and gray parts going down. Part of it is my fault for not following up yet on getting them to come back, because it is, there is a warranty on that, to come back and fix it, but...
Thank you, I just noticed that they weren't in there. Okay. Roll call, please.
Lane? Yes. Hana Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Item F, consider ordinance 2486 approving amendment of subdivision regulations regarding public improvements.
Patrick, you want me to start?
Sure.
And you can fill in gaps. Yeah, this is something we've been working with the planning commission on for a number, a number of months, and I do want to, I want to show you the minutes from the February planning commission meeting, because those were not in your staff report, the ones you had were from November. In essence, what this does is, it kind of just squares the subdivision procedure requirements with our current and past practices. I mean, we've, we've been doing subdivisions in a manner that's consistent with the proposed... in a manner that's consistent with the proposed language for more than 10 years now. So what we, first thing we wanted to do was square the practice with, with the code. But then also, another triggering event was the sidewalk issue in Oak Country 8. Now, they're totally separate, totally separate deals. But it's typical, in this region anyway, in subdivision construction for, you know, especially on single-family residential. The streets go in, and then stormwater, all the, all the infrastructure, but you don't put the sidewalks in until the houses are constructed. So when the home builder comes on, if there's a, if there's a sidewalk on his side of the street, part of his work is to put that sidewalk in. So that's because, a lot of times, when you're building a house, the sidewalk gets torn up during the home construction. And then also, with the driveways going in, sometimes, depending on the width of the lot and the width of the driveway, you might replace more than half of the sidewalk, putting your driveway in anyway. So it's very common practice within the area to, to delay the sidewalk installation until the homes are built. And that solves a lot of the problems, but one problem it creates is that if you don't have every home in the subdivision built, then you have gaps in the sidewalk. And so what we wanted to do with this is have a provision where, after a certain amount of time, the city could come in and build those sidewalks, and charge the cost of that to the lot owner at the time. And so we worked through the planning commission on, on this for a couple, a couple of months. The new stuff, the stuff that's redlined on the staff report in blue essentially is just squaring current practice with the regulations. The red area talks about delayed improvements, and that, that's, the delayed improvements would be the sidewalks. So that, those, those several paragraphs there are the ones that kind of explain the process that I just, that I just explained. The staff report included the minutes from the November planning commission meeting, when, when there, there were questions that were brought up and discussion that was had, and the issue was just not settled. And Kevin gave me a call this afternoon, and pointed that out to me, that the minutes from the January meeting, when the planning commission did approve it, weren't on the staff report. So I've got those here. You know, the discussion, and Linda was, was there as well. You know, we, we talked about it, the, the staff report at the time did clear up the questions that were brought up in November. And the planning commission did recommend the current amendment, as you see it here unanimously, so. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions, and Patrick, allow Patrick, if you have anything to add to that, please add.
Just briefly, and sort of big picture. One thing, when this started, we were focused on sidewalks. But I had suggested, and I think Brad and Mike also agreed, that it made sense to use the terminology delayed improvements, because as we move forward in time, there may be other things, you know, besides sidewalks, street trees, or culvert tubes, things like that. So that's why we wanted to broaden it, so it was not just focused on sidewalks. And then beyond that, just big picture, the way that this will work is if there are any improvements that are not in place at the time a building permit is issued, then back at the time the plat's approved, those will have to be indicated on the, the face of the plat. So, for example, if the developer, if, if Mike, as city engineer, determines that sidewalks or any other improvements that are part of the project, required public improvements, that Mike determines, from an engineering standpoint, should be allowed to be delayed, meaning they don't have to be in place prior to issuing a building permit, then those delayed improvements would be listed on the face of the plat, and the applicant would be agreeing that if those are not in place within a five-year period from the recording of the plat, then the city would have the ability to go ahead and put those improvements in, and then assess the cost for doing that to the lot that adjoins the improvement, or the, the lot that the improvement is on. So that's essentially how this would work in practice. So the, the last planning commit, which I guess was February, really the only change that the planning commission put into place was, I think, the first time around, we had thought the time period should be 10 years. But after discussion, that was changed to five years. And the thought there was that, making it five years, probably the developer is still in the picture. The development maybe is not complete. And the thought was that if that developer knows that the title is gonna be clouded by, you know, assessments, that they would go ahead and put those improvements in at the five, you know, before that five-year time period. If, if you made it 10 years, then you may have, sort of as we ran into in, in the other, I'm forgetting the, Oak Country 8, where you have lot owners that really, they don't have much, other than it's in their title work, they don't really have any idea what this assessment is about, or the potential. So that was the thinking behind the five years, so. And there is, it provides for a period of time, we would give notice that the city was going to do that improvement. So if the developer or the, the property owner wanted to go ahead and address that improvement, they could do that, which would keep, the, the city would not then assess the property, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
Y'all launch in.
Sure.
So knowing that the sidewalk was one of the kinda driving factors for it, or one of the ways that it relate, I'm trying to understand this idea of how we require sidewalks to be installed as a part of the improvement plans, but we have the cost of that borne by the homeowner. How do, how do we then, how do we, how do we address the responsibility for those sidewalks? So for example, in the opening paragraph, completion of improvements, where it talks about, "All applicants shall be required to complete, in accordance with approved construction drawings, and to the satisfaction of the city engineer, all the street, sanitary, and other public improvements, including lot improvements on the individual lots, as required by these regulations." Well, the sidewalks are shown on those improvement plans that are submitted by the developer. So aren't they, don't they fall under this, and this'll play out through here as well, that the applicant is required to complete those, and to leave them free and clear of liens and encumbrances to the city? And if not, where do we, where do we say that it's the homeowner's responsibility to actually deliver those sidewalks?
Well, you're right. The, the sidewalks clearly are the responsibility of the applicant. And so that's what the delayed improvements, we're saying, that's an exception. Like, everything has to be done, including sidewalks, before a building permit will be issued. But these delayed improvements are an exception to that. And the way that's defined, or these are improvements that these, not, not really that the applicant wants a pass on, that to save money, it's rather that the, these are improvements the city engineer determines. It makes no sense, from an engineering standpoint, to have the applicant, to allow the applicant to go ahead and put those in, because they're gonna be, they're public items that are gonna be jeopardized by future construction, so.
And I get that part. That, that's the practical part that I get. But it seems like, then, that we say the applicant's responsible for that as part of their approved plans, but we're gonna go on, we, we go back to the homeowner, or the lot owner, presumably who's no longer the applicant, to, to be responsible for it monetarily. So the applicant, who is responsible for delivering the, what's required by the city, can defer this, and then walk away. So, so the delay part kind of encourages whoever was that original applicant to default on the delivery of those. There's never a way we.
The, in practice, there wouldn't be a home there if the sidewalk wasn't constructed. That, I mean, the sidewalk, if you, if you are building a lot, on a lot that has a sidewalk shown in front of it, it has to be part of the building permit process to have that sidewalk constructed with that house, so that that condition can occur.
Right.
So that's, so you, you're not gonna live in a house, and then suddenly, five years later, the sidewalk wasn't built with my home construction, so now I'm, I'm responsible for the sidewalk.
Because we're tying it to the building permit.
It should be.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's, that's the initial, yeah, that's, that's how it should work. But then, the other provision is, if that lot sits empty for more than five years, then there's a provision, that's why you show, yeah, that's why you show the requirement on the face of the final plat, so that the lot owner knows that the, the city could come in and assess this. Well, but, and I think we had this problem in Oak Country 8, is there was this, this agreement with the city, but it doesn't show up in the title report. Yeah. So because it's on the face of the plat, it's, it's still probably not gonna show up as an irregularity in the title report. It's just gonna say, you own a lot per this subdivision plat. The homeowner, or the buyer's probably not gonna get a copy of that plat. And if they do, they're dead gum sure unlikely to pick that up. So my, my, we, we say in here, there was a part that was struck about, oh, it's in B2, the part about subdivision improvement agreement shall provide that the covenants contained in this agreement shall run with the land, buying all successors' heirs, and the signs. I almost feel like this, any agreement to delay should be recorded as a document that is applied to the lot for which it's been requested.
It will.
That was the intent, yeah.
That, on the face of the final plat, that certainly would attach to all the land, all the lots within that subdivision. So any title work is going to pick that up.
But I think, the title report, the title report's just gonna reference the plat. I don't think it'll reference that requirement. You know, then we'll get this situation, this homeowner go, ah.
There will not be a separate, though, I mean, we wouldn't have a separate request by the developer to delay these improvements. There won't be a separate agreement implied. I mean, we are allowing those agreement, or these improvements to be deferred until the lots are constructed on, or until five years is passed. I mean, that's the way I understand it. There, I don't, I, I guess I didn't see some, a developer saying, I'm gonna defer these impro, or these required improvements, because.
Well, just to, I mean, Kevin, the, when someone gets title insurance, I mean, that's the expect, that, this, the notations on the face of the plat, that would be part of the title commitment. That would be called out by the title insurance company, that, look, we're not, you know, like an easement. That would be called out. So the owner, in reviewing their title report, they would see that as, if they buy a lot, and they think, well, we're just gonna build on it in 10 years, that's something that definitely is part of this, they would be on notice of it.
If it doesn't just show up as a general statement says, including all easements and encumbrances as included on.
As shown on the reported plat of X, Y, Z acres.
A lot of, a lot of times, you'll just get a generic.
That's what you get on a, on a title report, on a platted lot.
Right.
That's the statement you get, that it's subject to all the stuff that's.
Conditions that are on the plat.
So I, yeah, I guess, what we're trying, you know, you mentioned the, in the, what's been struck, there was provision for having like a development agreement with the applicant. And we've just, here in the city, that's never been done. And Oak Country 8's a good example of, when we reached out to the developer, he essentially said he's not, I mean, we, we tied up his last lot in the development. But most of the time, these LLCs that, you know, the developer, by the time you're, you know, 10 years down the road, they don't have any assets.
Right.
So it's really a development agreement, wouldn't serve much of a purpose. So that's why the thought was that when it's on the face of the plat, you are tying up any, any owner of the land. And, and the thought was that because with a building permit, you're not gonna get an occupancy permit if all the improvements associated with that lot are in. The only people that are, are, might be, I guess, if you will, affected by this would be either the developer, who hasn't sold all his lots, or they haven't, so you have like three lots with no sidewalk, no, they haven't pulled building permits on it. Or you have someone that purchased a lot and waited several years to build on it. And so we, we.
I've owned a lot for 20 years I've never built on. That scenario.
Yeah, so, so that, you would be.
Where's your sidewalk?
Right.
Wasn't required. I wish we had sidewalks in our neighborhood. Maybe, I, I see, I see your point, that if something's just written on the final plat, and your, a typical title work comes back and says, oh, and by the way. Subject to all the. Whatever's on the final plat, people won't see that. If it's, if we include the language that you saw, that you've read, that's stricken out, if we include something like that, that this requirement will bind with and run with the land to the successors, we include that down in C2, where we're trying to get at that this is gonna be on the final plat. Would that help? Would that address that? It might help in my mind, because, you know, I, I do see that you put on there, associated with the final plat. And in C2, again, I came back to this struggle that I've got all the way through here with the fact that these sidewalks are required by the developer, but somehow we're kicking it off. C2 says, delayed improvements will only be permitted if the developer authorizes the city to. Only if the developer authorizes the city to install the delayed improvements.
Right.
But we're saying the homeowner has to install the delayed improvements if it's a sidewalk.
Well, that language is required, because the developer will be who's submitting the final plat. And so at that stage, the developer will have to agree to this language on the face of the plat. So it would be a, a.
It's like a.
That's saying that we are later on, and we're allowing you to put this on the plat to, for later, not, like, when it's time to do it, we're gonna call the developer up and say, okay, is it okay to do this now? Because it's already on there. He's already agreed that he's already permitted it to be on there.
And so he's on the hook for, you're right, if he sells lots, that commitment or obligation would run to whoever bought that lot.
I'm just wanting to make sure that that, that we keep that clear through here, because I'm trying to play this through, how, and I imagine you guys did this at the planning commission level as well, but how would this have played out in the Oak Country 8 scenario? If, if this were in, you know, if, if Oak Country 8 came up now, and you have this, would it have solved the problem?
I think it would have, because all of, all of the lots that were built on would have already had the sidewalk in place. So the only, so you, you're a home buyer and home builder there. That sidewalk was part of your home purchase cost. I mean, that just went with your lot. So the only ones that wouldn't have the sidewalk are the ones that are still vacant and not built on.
But then shouldn't, in the current way of doing it, shouldn't the homeowner have built that sidewalk anywhere?
They should have, and that was our fault. We, we granted an exception to let that not happen.
Yeah. Oak Country 8 was a special deal.
Well, they were the owners, too. Sorry to interrupt, but at that point, they owned all the, Dave Anderson and the Conleys owned all the land, so they were able to strike that deal.
And, and, and we, we, as the city council, bought that. I mean, we created that. We, that's all.
All right. I'll let you.
So if you're, if the developer, so I, I own this 20 acres, and I'm gonna develop it. And I'm gonna sell all these lots off, okay? And you're saying I don't have to put the sidewalk on until the final.
Until you build the house.
Until the building house is built. Okay, so now the sidewalk has to be put on. Does that, are, are you, I guess I'm still confused if the builder is paying and putting that on, or if the developer is paying and putting that on? Who pays for that sidewalk when it's put in? The builder?
Home builder.
So the home builder is doing it. But if our policy calls for the developer to put it in, right, it's in the plat, he's supposed to put it in, why don't we just make him put the sidewalks in while they're developing it?
Because then we would be wasting resources. We're building sidewalk on half of these lots that we're gonna tear out and throw away.
He's paying for, but then the builder is gonna come in, and the, oh, homeowner.
But you, you wanna say that he's, he's not having to pay for it? He has to sell that lot as, the, the, the home builder's not buying blind. He knows that he, building on this lot, he has to put a sidewalk in. So he's not gonna pay as much for that as he would for one that he didn't have to put a sidewalk.
That he didn't put a sidewalk in.
And that, the, the, nobody pays for anything that they don't have to, and nobody gets anything for free, in, in the development world especially. I mean, the sidewalk's required, somebody's gonna have to pay for it in the end. And in the end, it is the person that is. in the end, it is the person that is buying the house. All those costs that are associated with construction of their home on that.
The sidewalk is a part of that, they're taking that over because they're paying less for the lot, so they're taking that over, knowing that they're going to be paying for the sidewalk. And so when it comes down to the end, I mean, if that's kind of, I guess I'm confused then why it's a big issue of what you're saying, if that's the general practice in anybody's lot, if you own a lot, you pay for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, if you own a lot, you pay for the sidewalk, why would anybody expect coming in and buying these lots that their sidewalk would be paid for, for somebody that they're building it, buying it from, I guess?
I agree with the practical, and, and it is, is right, that the practicality is, you don't put sidewalks in because they're going to get torn up, whatever. I'm kind of keying on the notice part, you know, the, the understanding of who's responsible and the fact that the city can come in and say, okay, now we're doing it, and levying the cost, because that's what tripped up this Oak Country 8 thing, is these homeowners like, I, I didn't know.
Well, but the homeowner, if they're putting in a driveway, is responsible for, they buy a lot, they're responsible for the driveway.
All the way out in the public right of way.
Yeah, at which point, we have regulations stating, and they would be familiar with the fact that, from the street to, what, 80, how far into the property does it actually?
From the curb, about 14 feet back.
About 14 feet, has to be concrete.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're, when you're buying the property, you're all going to have to know that certain requirements such as, there's going to need to be a driveway that has a certain amount of concrete to it, this is just building upon that effectively, that the homeowner knows in the subdivision that they're going to have to have the entry driveway and sidewalks.
A sidewalk.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to, I feel like you guys have, everybody's had thought through, through this process, the notification, I'm good with that. I think we'll move on to another question then on. 701, in, in this issue, in, well, in C, 701, how does it relate to 702, the deferral of required improvements? Where deferral is to put something off, and then B talks about, when it's deemed necessary by the governing body to defer the construction of any improvement required under these regulations because of blah, 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 the subdivider shall pay his share of the cost of future improvements.
Right, so.
Or, and then C talks about future completion of deferred improvements, how does 702B and C relate to this C?
So the delayed improvements, that, I chose that terminology specific, different than deferred, the delayed improvements are, the, the thought is that, that will only be delayed for an engineering issue, it's not, so, the city engineer would have to determine that delaying these improvements makes sense from an engineering standpoint, i.e., these are public improvements, we, we don't want jeopardized by the construction process. The, the deferring that the governing body would have to approve is more for, that could take into account economics, like if the developer came and asked the, if the developer came and said, look, you know, that, that, one of the public improvements is a road, but it goes to nowhere, you know, I, why do I have to put this in? The thought would be, the city engineer would say, well, that's not a engineering decision, you need to go, you need to apply to the governing body, and the governing body could, you know, strike a development agreement saying, we agree, you know, that you don't have to put this road in now, that doesn't make sense, we will grant you to defer that until sometime later. And the thought would be, in connection with that process, the governing body would, you know, enter into some type of development agreement that would ensure that that road gets built later. So that's the difference, the delayed improvements are purely from a engineering standpoint, and then the deferred in 702 are, those all go to the governing body, the, the governing body would have to decide those.
And I'd, I'd point out, we, we were comparing, you were using the Oak Country 8 example, Oak Country 8 is, that kind of was a deferred thing, it really wasn't the regular subdivision where we didn't, where we allowed them not to do sidewalks, because if that had been the case, when those homes were built, those sidewalks would have gone in. That wasn't the case, the developer at the time came to the council and struck a, a separate agreement and deferred it. So that's, this was, this was the clause that Oak Country 8 happened.
So let's delete this.
Well.
This one at all.
But is there confusion, let's say, let's say I'm a developer and I want to cut in my streets, but I don't want to pave, I'm just going to put base in, I don't want to pave it until I've got, you know.
Two lots sold.
Two, yeah, yeah, or, you know, I'm only going to pave up to the, the house that got built, I'm, I'm not going to pave those until later. Well, is that a delayed improvement where it's determined to be in the best interest?
No.
No, okay, so that's how we avoid that, right? But it could be a deferred one.
Yeah.
It could be, yeah.
So he, so they could still ask either way.
It just takes it from an administrative thing to a governing body.
So C can be handled at an administrative level?
Yeah.
Okay.
The city engineer makes that decision.
Okay.
If you trust that guy.
Well, depends what guy's in the seat at that time.
True.
Okay, another topic, 703, under the inspection, in the event the city chooses not to perform inspection services, I'm not sure why we would choose not to do that, but the applicant shall provide a qualified resident construction observer. What's qualified? And should we say third party? Or, should it just be that we don't let ourselves get into that situation, because in the event that the city staff is not able to perform those inspection services, should the city contract for inspection? Not let ourselves get into that?
That's a good point. You know, the old, back in the old days, it was the design engineering firm that did the inspections.
And it still has to be that designer for sanitary sewers, as the designer of sanitary sewers.
Sure, but not for the streets.
Right, exactly.
And the streets are a place where we get problems with.
And, and I would agree with you 100%.
And I would not want the developer providing a qualified.
We collect inspection fees for that.
Yeah, we just collect the fee and the city would hire a third party.
If you, if we can't do it, then we would have someone.
It'd just be a workload thing, if that.
Just, we probably need an on-call contract with someone that would be available to provide those services so that.
Or just, if it happens once a year, you just, yeah, in an on-call type capacity, just go out for it when you need it. But I would not encourage that we allow the applicant.
To provide.
To provide inspection services. Chicken, you know, Fox Garden henhouse thing. 705 then, related to this, my question about 701 versus 702, does that, does that building permit hook, if you will, need to also apply to 702 in this as well, 701? So should, should that one say according to 701 or 702?
My thought would be no, because 702, to me, is, the developer is essentially at the mercy of the governing body, so my thought would be, you would not defer, similar to Oak Country 8, you would not grant a deferment until you were confident that you had insurance or assurance that that improvement's going to be put in, so I.
But does it just provide a little additional meat to the governing body's act under 702 to say that no building permits will be issued on a lot or tract that's, that falls under the 702 deferral?
Well, but maybe in the agreement with 702, that's precisely what you're doing, you're allowing him to get a couple of building permits before.
Before all of them.
He has to do something.
Like sidewalks are built.
It might be exactly what the appoint of that whole thing is.
Okay. Um, that's all we got, just tried to vet it out.
Good questions.
Yeah.
So on the 703, on the, the applicant providing the, is that something you think we should, I mean, you could change it here at the council.
We could, if that's what we want to do, but otherwise, I'm just saying administratively, I hope we don't let the applicant provide their own inspection. I would prefer to see the city provide third-party inspection, whether this needs changed or not, I don't know. This allows for the applicant to do it, but I don't, and the, I, I would, I could, I could see that sentence being struck with no harm.
True, but, other than, I guess, I guess in theory, we charge a 3% inspection fee.
Whether you use your own staff or whether you have to contract out.
And so, that, that should be plenty to, to pay, I mean, it, it should be, or we should increase it.
So then this would say that you're going to charge them a 3% fee, and you're going to have the applicant provide it.
Yeah. Yeah, it could, so if you just struck it, I would be comfortable with that, knowing that the application, the inspection fee, we could use those.
Gives you the resources to go hire.
Yeah.
A qualified firm to go do third-party inspection.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'd be good just striking it, just from a financial standpoint.
So if you just want to do that as part of your motion, the, the ordinance would need to be.
You're assuming I'm going to make a motion?
What's that?
You're assuming I'm going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm just saying for anybody, it'll just have to pass by a two-thirds majority if you change language without sending it back to the planning commission.
Well, out of all my questions, I, I don't have any other, I wouldn't have any other changes to propose, I think you guys have hashed it out pretty well.
Is this modeled after any other Kansas community? I mean, this is common in most suburban communities around here that are building homes.
No, I.
And I actually have friends that have had to build sidewalk on vacant lots adjacent to the houses they built because, it was in Ramon, Missouri side, but, you know, had to fill in.
Because time went by, or because?
Because, exactly, because it had been, similar to the five years, I don't know if it was five or seven, but.
Well, I think five's, I wouldn't go beyond five, so I'm glad you made that change from 10 to 5, because we need to keep it fresh in people's minds.
No, we didn't, we just kind of took what we had before.
From scratch.
Did I exhaust everybody on their questions? Is this ordinance number correct? 2486?
Correct.
And I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2486, approving amendment to the subdivision regulations regarding public improvements, with the exception of striking the last sentence of section 7, 0, 7.03A. And Lana, do you want me to read that sentence to make it clear?
No, I can copy it.
Okay, we have a motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second the motion.
And a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Wayne?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Burdo?
Yes.
And?
Mayor?
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion here.
Item G, consider road use and maintenance fee agreement with Martin Marietta.
Yes, council, at last week's Board of County Commission meeting, they approved a conditional use permit for the quarry operation. It's essentially, it's a five-year permit, a 10-year permit with a five-year renewal. One of the approval conditions for that was for the quarry to enter into a road maintenance fee agreement with the city of DeSoto, relating to the maintenance of their haul route, which is 95th Street from their quarry entrance west to Lexington Avenue, and then Lexington Avenue to K10. We've had a maintenance agreement for, just with Martin Marietta, it was a three-party maintenance agreement since 2015, when that condition was placed on the use permit at that time. That actually required the quarry operators to perform maintenance on the haul route, and that worked well for a while, the first couple of, of rounds of pothole patching and maintenance was done by the quarry without much problem, but last year, we came to a disagreement with the level of improvements that we wanted to see as opposed to what the quarry wanted to see, and then the county was kind of left in the middle of it as arbitrator, really for no reason. All of the, that entire route is all within the city of DeSoto, it's all our maintenance responsibility. So this time around, we concluded that the better thing to do would just be to assess a yearly, just an annual maintenance fee, for, basically to, to account for the truck's impact on ongoing maintenance on that, on that route. So that's what we did, we, we worked with the quarry, met with the county, the mayor and I went down to the county to meet on this issue in the fall, and so that's the, the condition is to execute a maintenance agreement. They have 60 days from the board's action last week to do that. The agreement you have in front of you essentially just lays out the warehouses and wherefores surrounding the background, and assesses a $14,000 annual fee. The $14,000 was arrived, we did this analysis, and actually, we did this back in 2015, when we were kind of headed that direction but decided not to. I, I've tried to assess what the quarry traffic's impact would be on a mill and overlay project for, for the, for the designated route, assuming that mill and overlay project will last for 10 years, and the quarry traffic is 90% of the traffic on, or 90% of the heavy traffic on 95th Street, 35% of the heavy traffic on Lexington Avenue, that's the number we came up with, $14,000. The good news is, the quarry thought that was just way too high, and so, I felt pretty good about the number, I, I do, honestly, I, I think that's, that's a fair number and it'll compensate us for the added, added cost of maintenance over time on that route. So we're recommending the authorize the mayor to sign that road maintenance fee agreement.
What, did they have a special use permit for five years?
The permit is actually for 10 years, but there's a five-year renewal period, yeah, there's a five-year, I guess they called a review period, so at the end of five years, they go back to the county commission. But the permit's for 10 years, so I don't know.
The permit's for 10 years, but then they, at the end of 10 years, they go back?
No, so.
Or five years, they go back.
At the end of five years, they go back, and it's a renewal, but at that renewal time, the county has the ability to address concerns or things that have gone wrong.
Well, shouldn't we do the same thing on the agreement, instead of making a flat 10 and then a renewable, automatic renewal for 10, do we, shouldn't we put ours in the same as theirs, to match that agreement with the use permit? That's what I would.
We could do that, we could do five.
I would, I would suggest that, rather than us overextending other past the time.
Yeah, you know, it might be legal nuance, but the, the term of the permit that the county gave is 10 years, but there's a five-year review period, and so they go back to the county at five years. Now, whether the county can abolish their permit at that time, I, I don't know, I can't tell you. So I don't know whether to call it a 10-year, the term on their permit says 10 years, but there's this period after five years where they have to come back and, and there's, there's a review, review process there that involves public hearing, but I'm not, I'm not confident in Patrick, I haven't asked Patrick to even have a look at the, what they approved, so I, I think five years would probably be okay, be, be fine with me.
I don't think they're going to agree to it.
I would be.
Are you talking about the additional time or five years initially?
Yeah, exactly, so.
I mean, so initially, it's 10 years.
The permit term is 10 years.
Uh-huh, but after the first five years, they can relook at it, not.
There's a review process.
Okay, so is that what you're understanding, though? Because I'm thinking.
I'm thinking that that's not really, if that period is five years, and then they're going to review everything, I mean, we should do the same thing and review it in five years and say, okay, we, that road maintenance money did not cover it, or it was too much, or whatever, and do that, instead of just saying a flat 10 years and put that amount of money on it.
Well, my understanding is the five-year review is just simply a check-in, so if there were major issues, that would give the county, that forces the applicant to come in and, and talk, but they have that permit for 10 years, and just being involved with the discussions with the quarry, I don't think they're ever going to agree that the city could raise this from 14,000 at the five-year mark.
What if they doubled or crippled their capacity?
Well, I don't think they can under their.
In five years?
I, I mean, I don't know, Mike, what you think, but I.
Five years would be. Five years would be the end of their permit, right?
No.
No, they say they got.
So they're starting a new 10-year, or they're, they're five-year review?
No, they're starting a new 10-year.
Starting a new 10-year.
So this would be co-terminous with. So this would be coterminous with their, with the permit.
This is-
Right.
So if they were to want to double their capacity, they can't do that under their existing terms for 10 years.
Right.
Which would be our same 10.
Right.
Correct.
This is a requirement for them to get their permits.
Right. Yeah.
So we would be asking the quarry to, hey, we'd like to reopen this, the 14,000 at the five-year mark, and I just don't think they're ever going to-
Well, I mean, what if we said that we want to review this in five years, just like they do? So we have some kind of option or choice. I mean, that's what they're essentially doing. Why didn't, why can't we follow that?
Well, my understanding of the five-year isn't, the county can't change anything on them. It's just a check-in.
Compliance review.
Right, a compliance review. So it's not like they're opening up the permit and changing a bunch of stuff.
They're just making sure that they're abiding by what they're supposed to do after five years.
It's not a renegotiation.
But we could ask, I just think, but my guess is Martin Marietta is going to say, no, we're not, we're not going to reopen the 14,000 at the five-year period. I don't know what you think, Mike.
I agree, you know, and in terms of doubling their capacity, their use permit has restrictions on the truck traffic. So, you know, they would be out of compliance at that point if the truck traffic doubled, and our 14 grand calculation wasn't right.
Right, that's what our calculation is based on.
Yeah, and it's so as far as a five-year review, compliance review, there's no compliance review with this. It's just whether or not we get our 14 grand every year by April.
Yeah, what's the penalty if they don't pay?
Yeah.
Uh, they'd be in breach-
They're out of compliance.
They're out of compliance with their use permit.
We lock them into their place.
Yeah, but their use permits already been for 10 years, so we can't stop that.
And this is based upon truck traffic.
No, if they don't pay the-
If they don't pay us, say, the first five years, let's say they default on that payment, they've still got 10 years of operation.
No, the county was- This is part of their permit. If they don't pay us, they're out of compliance on their permit.
Yeah. There's a million different things they can be out of compliance on, this being one of them.
Could there be, instead of us changing our year terms, just have a clause in there if there's any reason for that the county fines, and maybe it's in here and I'm just not reading it right. If there's a non-compliance that the county fines, then it could be relooked at or something? I mean, is that even necessary, though?
We don't have that in here.
I mean, if this county finds some kind of compliance issue.
That would get to the point of, if they double their truck traffic.
Right. So if they, if they're non-compliant in any way, then something could be looked at at that point, but otherwise, it's a 10-year contract unless the county fines them to be in non-compliance. That way, we don't have to go through all of this and spend our lawyer time and our time to, when we already got them on for 14,000, I think we want to keep it while we've got it. Because they could, in five years, try to cut that back, too, in some way.
Yeah, or maybe another way of phrasing it would be to say that this agreement is contingent upon them remaining in compliance.
Is the level of truck traffic in the county agreement with them?
Not necessarily in this agreement? Yeah, it is. It's in the county's use permit.
Okay. Are there, have they given any indications of expanding operations territorially? As far as expanding into more properties, and if so-
Or changing grounds?
Well, our agreement with them would then be still based upon truck traffic?
Yes, so there, this use permit does show an expand, 54, they're expanding the quarry acre, area by 54 acres toward the east.
Towards Kill Creek?
No, the east, the other way.
The other way.
The other way. They've indicated that they, there's more rock out there to mine. And I'm guessing they're, they'll want to expand that again. But the intensity of the operation, I have not heard that they're going to want to double their capacity, their processing capacity or the truck traffic on a yearly basis. It's just the area, if quarry is, by the nature of the operation.
What about routing?
The route is set by the permit. It's specific. West on 95th and to Lexington Avenue, north to K-10.
So if they change that, and they start going someplace else, a different direction, say down 95th or something, or-
They're out of compliance.
Then they're out of compliance, not correct?
Yeah, and that's in this agreement. That's in our agreement, the route. Yeah, then they would be in breach of this agreement and out of compliance with their use permit of the county.
There's an occasional few trucks that go down that one.
I think it's probably occasionally a few that go south on Lexington. I don't know if that's a big concern, but ones that go east on 95th, that's not okay.
That's the ones I see.
Yeah.
Just a handful.
I guess what I would add is this document's been several months in the formulation, so.
60 days, right?
Yeah, they've got 60 days from last Thursday.
To sign this?
Uh huh.
I just thought if you wanted to, you could, under paragraph three, under the now, therefore, at the end of that sentence, you could just add, and Martin Marietta remains in compliance with its conditional use permit, with its county conditional use permit. I think that would address a lot of what we've been talking about.
Uh huh.
And I don't think they would have a big problem with that.
So they've seen this language so far, though?
Yeah, they've agreed to what's here.
They've agreed to this.
Yeah.
Can we add that then?
Oh, we'd have to go back to them to agree to it then again.
Well, we can add it tonight, and if they don't like it, they can let us know. If they do, they can sign up.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion if you can help with what-
I'll just give it to Lana, so she'll-
Okay, and that was to paragraph three?
Yeah, under three, right at the end of that.
Yeah. All right, I will, I move to approve the road use and maintenance fee agreement with Martin Marietta, with the modification to paragraph three, as indicated by the city attorney.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Otto Michael?
Yes.
Okay, item GH, consider ordinance 2487 allowing poultry or fowl on lots less than one acre.
Counsel, this item actually went before the Planning Commission, and Brad has been working with the Planning Commission on this item. But actually, the, when the city first allowed chickens to be kept within the city, that was done via amendment of the city code, not the zoning regulation. So definitely appreciate the input from the Planning Commission, but technically, this item was not required to go before the Planning Commission. But I do think it was good. We got some really good feedback from the Planning Commission, so.
Thanks for doing all the work. Thanks for all that work, Linda.
Yeah, there you go.
Bob.
So what you have here is, essentially, the change is allowing, I don't know if you remember the two young people that came to you, but this, this allows the keeping of poultry and fowl on land that is less than one acre. Without this change, chickens are only allowed on lots that are at least one acre. So this expands the allowance, and for lots less than one acre, they're, you know, they're, it's more stringent in that you have to have a permit issued by the city, and via that permit, you have to meet certain requirements. So the ordinance that I prepared provides a definition for poultry and fowl, and this definition comes right from the zoning regulations. And then it allows, it separates lots less than one acre and then lots at least one acre. So this would, the ordinance would take this change into effect.
Okay. Did this clean up the language then for setbacks from the, in the rear yard, from the side and rear?
Yes.
That was discussed at the Planning Commission?
It does. It talks about, on lots less than one acre, it's 20 feet from the rear and side setbacks in the backyard. And the thought there was, since you're dealing with a smaller acreage, the set pack should be smaller as well. And then for lots at at least one acre, it's 25 feet from the side and rear property lines in the backyard.
Questions from counsel?
So was there any engagement or activity with the two young adults that came and kind of precipitated this?
I think they were at, about a meeting.
They were at Planning Commission.
Were they?
Yeah. I'm surprised not to see them here.
Very good. I'm glad they were engaged through the process.
Yep.
Did they want any change to the goat?
No, we've already done, we've already been through the goats. We're all goat-ed out.
Anyone wish to make a comment, question, or make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2487, amending the code to allow the keeping of poultry and fowl on lots that are less than one acre, if certain requirements are met, and a permit issued.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Renner?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Otto Michael?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Okay. Executive session, no items?
None this evening, no.
Okay, advisory, city administrator?
Yeah, I have one thing. I think bureau counsel is aware, the Johnson County is performing a housing, a countywide housing study in connection with the Universal, United Community Services. There's the one, the group that's headed, heading up the effort. They've hired RDG Planning to assist with that. What they're doing currently is a kind of a countywide housing stock and needs inventory. And what they've asked from us is, they have listening sessions that are occurring throughout the county, beginning in April. And they've requested from each community, one city council member and one planning commission member, to attend one session, you're here, one session on April 1st from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, at a location that's yet to be determined. If you're interested in that, let me know. I know, I don't know if you all have your-
I will share what I told them.
Oh, I thought maybe Danny and Linda could write together. It would make it easy.
It would, wouldn't it? Well, I'll send that email out. There's an email kind of explaining the process. I'll send that out tomorrow morning.
Oh, I'm busy.
You guys can look for it if you want to volunteer for that. They really want community input from that.
I guess we could have a date.
Okay. Cheap one.
There you go.
But you were kind of involved in that, and you're working Alatha, weren't you, something, or were you?
Yeah.
Yeah. So actually, I thought it was a good fit.
We'll go that direction then, great.
Thanks, guys. You're welcome.
We'll get the city car ready for you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mike?
That's it.
All right, Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Lana?
Just one thing. I will be traveling to the Missouri Conference early Monday morning, and will be there next week, so I will be taking city pens and talking about DeSoto with my colleagues. And then a week after that, Patrick will be covering for me at the council meeting, and I will be in Saint Cloud, Minnesota, for the Minnesota conference.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel comments. Kevin, would you like to start tonight?
No, this is a good productive meeting. I have no report.
Okay. Lori?
I have nothing, mayor, thank you.
Rob?
Water One, and their project down 83rd Street. Is there any indication that they're going to repair Ravenswood back to what it was beforehand, the road there?
I'll need to follow up on that, and I know when-
It's kind of gra, it looks kind of gravel field, sort of, and-
Yeah, the asphalt plants aren't open yet.
Now that weather is getting nicer.
Yeah, asphalt, well, are the asphalt, can anybody get asphalt yet? I don't think quite yet. Let me follow up, and I'll get, I'll get back with you. Yeah, I know there was, that project was a little bit painful, but I think they've restored most of it, I mean, from what I can tell. But yeah, the pavement patch on Ravenswood's still hanging out there, so.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Rob. Kevin?
I'm good, mayor, thank you.
Danny?
I'd like to thank Mike for getting the speaker system back up.
Are they better?
It worked very well tonight, yes.
Okay, good, all right.
I was actually enjoying it over there. Thank you. I have nothing else, mayor.
All right, thank you. I have just a couple things. My guess, a reminder, Lana sent out an email earlier about the state of the county address, March 27th, I think, is that, do you remember, Kevin?
That sounds about right.
Sounds about right, near the end of March.
March 12th.
12th, no. That's the mayor's address.
14th?
24th.
24th, all right.
I didn't get one.
I don't, I don't think I got.
The chamber did, but I don't think-
Oh, I thought Lana, maybe you just copied me on it.
I did, I just sent you into my-
So then the request is, I don't know, how many seats do you have available, Sarah? For a council? So anybody that would like to go let Lana know, so that she can let Sarah know, or just let Sarah know, might work as well.
Good idea.
I will occupy one of the seats, though.
Isn't that the state of the county?
State of the county, so it's at the Alatha Conference Center. Not on the 27th, on the 24th.
24th, it's Tuesday.
The state of the city will be on the 12th at the chamber luncheon, for those that don't have anything to do on the-
I cannot go the 24th if somebody wants to.
And then the, so, an update, last night, I hosted the Johnson and Wyandotte County Council Mayor's here in the council chambers. We had a good turnout. We had the Secretary of Transportation here to speak to us, provide input on her information regarding the new forward transportation plan, a little bit on the cost share. So as I'm sitting over here on this side of the room, looking across the room at our trails plan, and she's talking about cost share, I'm saying, we need to put a cost share application together for at least one of those trails, and get it in the works in case the bond passes, or perhaps if it doesn't, then we maybe would have a partner that would let us accomplish that. So I've asked Mike to start working on a cost share application. The deadline for submittals is April 15th, so we will know at the time we submit the application whether or not we have the bond referendum was successful, but I think that would allow us to stretch immediately out of the gate, stretch our money further
Yeah.
On that, on that program. And those are the kinds of projects they're looking for, alternative modes of transportation, are what they're looking to, on or off system, so.
Yeah, that's a great one.
And I bragged on us about our community storm shelter and the work we did to, and I may have lied, but I said that was operational, I don't know.
Actually, they did install, Jay, what's, do you know? They installed the door hardware yesterday, right? It's on.
I saw a guy testing it yesterday on my way into the meeting.
I thought I read something about a test on it, but I don't remember where I read that. No, maybe that was in the, just in our updates.
It was the statewide.
Statewide test before Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah. It was at 10 o'clock.
I just know one at 10. And then we had a regular 11, and Wednesday was it?
Yeah, then the next day, you had the same thing.
And then I have one final item, which is the vacancy on our park board. I would like to, I, you know, we've had that application process active and open for a while. Got a number of applications in, and one of those applications- a number of applications in. And one of those applications came from Ryan Johnson, our athletic director at the high school. I talked to Ryan, I talked to, basically I shortlisted the top four, talked to each of those people. But I just think the synergy of being able to have Ryan Johnson part of our park board and the athletic director would work well for us. So I would like to have your counsel concurrence of his appointment to the park board. He is completing construction on a house in DeSoto. He does not have occupancy yet, but he should have by the next park board meeting. And if he doesn't, he would be just a ex officio, I assume, then until we would, he would secure residence in the city.
Well, I would make a motion to accept the mayor's nomination of Ryan Johnson to the park board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I think that's all I have tonight, so.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned.